Okay, good evening. I'd like to go ahead and recall this meeting back to order. And Madam Clerk, I believe we are at public hearings?
Yes, we are at public hearings. Second public hearings for Unified Land Development Code amendments related to 2025 Legislative Session.
Okay, excellent. And the recommended action is that staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners, there's no other thing, but I assume adopts the regulations. Yes, okay, good. You're recommending adoption. Okay, good. Mr. Venkatar, welcome. Hey.
Hi.
Keith? Okay. We shouldn't, yeah, we shouldn't be here past 12, so.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mayday. Venkatar, Alachua County Growth Management. So, this is the adoption hearing for the Unified Land Development Code Amendment, which has the number Z2500026, and it is related to legislative updates from the 2025 Legislative Session. You may recall, we met last month, this was the first hearing, tonight's the adoption hearing, and it relates to two bills, Senate Bill 700, which is for farmworker housing, and Senate Bill 954 for certified recovery residences. We, as county, passed ordinance 2024-16 in November of 2024 for farmworker housing. And subsequent to that, the state legislature passed Senate Bill 700, and we are therefore required to provide new standards for farmworker housing. So farmworker housing is allowed now on any parcels that have ag classification for legally verified farmworkers, and must comply with Department of Health standards. So, the biggest change now is that special exception is not going to be the way that farmworker housing is approved. It will be approved with an administrative development plan. The standards are shown in the backup. If you have any questions about what those standards are, I'm happy to go into further detail. The zoning use table shows now all the zoning districts with the letter A, which indicates that it would be allowed as an accessory use to a farm operation. And the second Senate bill is 954, and we have Angelina Jacobs to discuss that part of this presentation.
Yes, Jacobs, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Angelina Jacobs. I am a planner in Growth Management. So Senate Bill 954 requires that we adopt by January 1st, a review and approval process for the certified recovery residences. The, that just means that we need to provide a use table category, which we did within, as a limited use in those following zoning districts. We also created in Section 404.29.5, a special under the group housing Article 5. So that provided standards and procedures for the approval of these certified residences, and then a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation inconsistent with fair housing and also with Americans with disabilities. And then on top of that, we also made sure that our definition matched the statute. And this is just showing where it lines up in our zoning use table. And with that, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners convene as a Land Development Regulation Commission and find the amendments consistent with the Alachua County Comprehensive Plan, and also then reconvene as the OCC, improve the ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Code, and authorize the Chair's signature. And that concludes our presentation.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No. I rec, I move that we convene as the Land Development Regulation Commission and find the amendments consistent with the Alachua County Comprehensive Plan.
All right, motion, a second, to convene as Land Development Regulation Commission. Any further discussion?
I'm only to say, I'm really sad that we have to do this for the farmer worker housing, and I really appreciate all the work that our staff did to build something that was meaningful prior to this preemption.
Please keep it in the file.
Absolutely.
Be ready to pull it out in 2025 if that ever changes, right?
Yes.
That's what we talked about at the first meeting. Okay. Any public discussion? Back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Now we will reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
We have approval of the ordinance amending the ULDC code and authorize Chair's signature.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? See none, back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is unanimous. Thank you. All right, that's one down.
If it goes this fast, we'll be out of here soon.
One, oh, you just jinxed it, everybody. Okay. Order dinner. All right.
It's on Mary.
Mary's buying. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Next, we'll have Unified Land Development Code amendments for livestock and poultry adoption hearing.
Okay, the recommended action, once we hear the presentation, will be to convene, find it consistent, and then reconvene, and authorize the ordinance. Really? Your recognize?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners.
I've seen this like 15 times. Can we just move?
Yeah.
I, I move that we convene as the Land Development Regulation Commission and find the ULDC amendments consistent with Alachua County Act Plan.
Second.
Second.
A motion, two seconds. Good luck with this one passing as well. Any public discussion?
Oh, sure, that's what this crowd was here for.
Bring it back to the board. They're happy with the chickens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Let's reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
I move we approve the ordinance and authorize the Chair's signature on the ordinance for single-family chickens.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, based on the excellent presentation. Thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion from the public? Back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Great job.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Even though it was quick, I know it was a lot of work, so, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe that moves us into the one quasi-judicial public hearing.
Yeah.
Which is?
Preliminary development plan for Eastwood Preserve.
Okay, and the recommended action is to approve the proposed preliminary development plan and the resolution based on the findings that are consistent with the Alachua County Comprehensive Plan, Alachua County Unified Land Development Code. I think we have the attorney that's going to give us the speech, and then we'll sec, um, ex parte and swear at some people, and have them swear back to us.
Mr. Chair, this is a quasi-judicial item, so all persons wishing to testify or present evidence during this hearing will be sworn in prior to speaking during this proceeding. All persons have the right through the Chair to ask questions of staff or other speakers, seek clarification of comments, or, and respond to comments or presentations. All persons who present written materials to Commissioners for consideration by the Board must ensure that a copy of such materials is provided to the Clerk for inclusion in the Board's records of proceedings and official amendments. While we welcome comments from all persons with an interest in this proceeding, Florida law requires that the County Commission's decision in a quasi-judicial action be supported by competent substantial evidence presented to the Board during the hearing on the application. Competent substantial evidence is such evidence as a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. There must be a factual basis in the record to support opinion testimony from both expert and non-expert witnesses. Persons presenting testimony may rely on any factual information in the record to support their testimony. In a moment, the Clerk will ask for persons other than the staff and the applicant who wish to participate as parties to identify themselves and explain to the Board why they wish, why they believe they are parties, to be a party. A person must show that he or she is more directly impacted or more substantially impacted by the Board's decisions today than the public at large. If the Board determines that you have party status, you'll be permitted a reasonable opportunity to present testimony and evidence, and to ask questions. Otherwise, you'll be permitted to testify as a member of the public. And I don't think we have any party requests.
We don't have any party status requests.
Okay, but they can ask for party status today if they can explain to you why they did not make the deadline in the code.
Wishing to seek a party status today? No? Okay. Can I inquire if any Commissioners have received any ex parte communications, and if so, disclose them?
No.
This is from the last time we spoke about this here, right? Not since before then?
Mm-mm.
Yeah, no.
No.
None.
Well, I guess I did have one meeting. It wasn't on the preliminary development plan. I did have a meeting with the developer about the idea of workforce development and connecting him with a member of our community who's doing workforce development in construction and may be able to help support those efforts.
Yeah, and I think I had a meeting with John Moran, but it was about the scenic road, not about this, so, yeah.
At this time, anyone wishing to address these items, if you would please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Barish, it's your show. You recognize?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm Christine Barish. I'm the Development Review Manager with Growth Management. This item has been properly advertised. There's a copy of my resume on file, and I've now been sworn. This is a preliminary development plan for Eastwood Preserve. It's a 149-unit single-family subdivision. It's at the northwest intersection of southeast Hawthorne Road and Lake Shore Drive. It's approximately 81.16 acres. It's in the low-density residential future land use as well as conservation, which I think you're familiar with. And the zoning is also residential, single-family estate, R1A, RE1, R1A, and conservation C1. So, as you're familiar with this, because there were some affiliated Act Plan amendments, it established the conservation of the low-density future land uses. It capped the total number of units at 149, single-family detached units. There was also some buffer requirements along the eastern side. 200-foot buffer on the eastern boundary limited to green spaces, stormwater management areas, tree preservation areas, utility infrastructure, and no roadways or lots permitted within that 200-foot buffer, which all of this was also evaluated with the preliminary development plan. And here we have a general location of the property, where you can see it's near Lake Shore Drive and Hawthorne Road with the new zonings. And then this is an aerial view of the subject property. It's mostly wooded, except for some areas to the south that were already impacted from some existing development down there on the smaller parcels. So these are some existing conditions from Hawthorne Road. And then this is facing north from northeast 51st Street, and then again facing south from northeast 51st Street. And then here's just some photos of the site from the site visits that were done over the summer. You can see here some of the beautiful canopy present on the site, as well as their strategic ecosystems to the north. And that's what this map shows. This is that eastside greenway strategic ecosystem, which you are familiar with, also from the Act Plan Amendment. And Mark Brown is here. If you have any questions, I can, before we move into trees, let him answer your questions regarding the ground truthing of the strategic ecosystem. I know he provided a lot of detailed information in the staff report. And this is also our open space plan. So this open space plan is per a new code and Act Plan rules, as well as the strategic ecosystem set aside. So there's 39% total open space with this plan, which is made up of the strategic ecosystem to the north and the smaller CMAs that you see here, the smaller wetland CMAs as well. And then tree canopy. We have 47.7% of the property is set aside in tree canopy preservation. And due to the changes to the hierarchy in our code, the landmark live oaks were set aside first, and there's seven of them. And that's what you see in the red circles. This sort of hatched symbology would be the 10% tree canopy preservation area, which is sort of the best of the trees, and that's because they met the maximum density of 149 units. So we depicted that in that hatched area to meet the 10%. And then this very, like, straight line, horizontal line, is sort of the extra trees, which would be the conservation areas. The primary protected trees are kind of near some of the other smaller CMAs, as well as the landmark live oaks that were set aside as well. And then these are just the photos of the landmark live oaks themselves. And if you have any questions, Mr. Caniglio is here as well to answer them regarding these trees. And then this is just an overall preliminary development plan that shows, you know, network block streets, as well as all the depictions of our open space trees. And I believe one of the items in the Act Plan Amendment was regarding access to Lake Shore Drive, which there is none, so there's no access to Lake Shore Drive, but there is also access to 51st Street, which I believe there was some public comment about that in your backup. This preliminary development plan is consistent with the Alachua County's Comprehensive Plan and Unified Land Development Code, and we recommend approval of the preliminary development plan for Eastwood Preserve.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barish. Commissioners, any questions for our staff before we hear from the applicant?
Yes, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
Okay, Clay? Thank you, no questions. The lights are dark. Hey, Clay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Clay Sweger with EDA Consultants. Good evening. I'd like to give you a brief presentation. I will repeat some of the things that Ms. Barish indicated, but obviously there's been a long road to get here for this project, and very excited to have it before you. All of the topics and issues that we've discussed before, we are following through on, and I think that's reflected in the preliminary development plan and some of the other things that we're going to be bringing forward as the project continues to move forward. So, here we go. So, this is an image that we had from the land use and zoning conversations, just to give you some context related to some adjacent neighborhoods to the west. The Eastside Activity Center and our property, about 81 acres, is outlined in red. These are the land use and zoning maps that you did vote to approve back in August, which did include the northern portion of the property to be put into conservation, and the remainder to be just a single-family, low-density residential designations, removing some of the highway commercial at the corner. There's also a condition, or I should say a policy, that's now in the Comprehensive Plan, site-specific, which we don't usually do a lot of site-specific policies unless there's unique circumstances, which we thought there were here, limiting to single-family detached unit types, 149 lots. detached unit types, 149 lots, also having a 200-foot greenway along the east side of the property. So, our preliminary development plan honors that, and I'll have that pulled up on the screen for you in just a minute. And one of the other big discussion points of the commission and the neighbors and the applicant was the limitation of full vehicular access on Lake Shore Drive, and so that's reflected at the very bottom of the policy. So, those are all codified now in your comprehensive plan. So, just to take a step back, the land use and zoning discussions that we had, those were approved back in August, along with that site-specific condition that I just highlighted for you. And tonight is the preliminary development plan review for you. Hopefully, you'll see to approve it tonight, and then we'll get started on preparing the final development plan, which is essentially the full engineered construction plans and the final plat for the subdivision. They'd like to bring it all in in one phase, build the project at one time, and get going as soon as possible. We would stop taking so long on our side to get everything ready, so. This is just a quick highlight of the preliminary development plan. North is up, sort of rotated the drawing. 149 detached units. There is interconnectivity to Hawthorne Road and to 51st Street on the west side. No vehicular access, just emergency access allowed on Lake Shore Drive. The 200-foot greenway is reflected with this dashed line that comes down and over, so there's no pavement, lots, or anything like that in the greenway. It consists of either dry landscaped stormwater areas, existing high-quality canopy tree areas, and wetlands and CMAs. So, that'll contribute to the larger greenway that exists naturally on the east side of this property, and it also is under conservation easement. Almost 40% of the site is being placed into a CMA, so that includes all the wetlands, all the wetland buffers, the significant habitat area on the north end that has now been ground truthed and approved by county EPD. So, that's, that's a significant amount of the property. We've worked closely with the county arborist, providing a tree survey of the entire property. All of the landmark live oaks have been identified and are to be preserved in their entirety. We designed the project around them to preserve them. Almost 50% of all of the existing tree canopy is proposed to remain, which is a pretty high and impressive number, if I may say so, for urban type of residential development. So, we really tried to thread a lot of needles here, and I think we, I think we've gotten there. So, this layout is essentially the same as what we showed you at the zoning level, just to, even though you weren't approving that layout, you knew what was coming, and so we were very happy to not have to make hardly any changes to the plan that you have before you tonight. And so, almost two-thirds of the property will be in some sort of green space, CMA, landscaped area, common area, tree canopy area. So, it's going to be a lot of green. So, this gives you a high-level overview. If you have any questions about that layout, please let us know. Sergio Reyes, the engineer of records, here tonight as well. And I just placed the PDP plan on top of that previous exhibit, so you can get a little bit better context of the area. So, we are here tonight for the preliminary development plan. We do need, there's still a lot of work to do, full engineering, based on the layout that we have before you tonight. That includes the full engineering design, utilities, stormwater roads, working on the CMA plan, the Conservation Management Area Plan, and the conservation easement that'll ultimately come back to you all. We're still working with adjacent neighbors and having conversations about whether or not we will join into a larger CMA or have two separate ones, but we have committed to do and limit it to the things that they, they were concerned about, really just to keep it more of a wildlife corridor, natural area, and not to activate it too much in this case. We are going to bring forward HOA documents. Generic HOA documents are required at final, but we want to augment and do more. That's to, and we discussed this at the zoning level, to put those fertilizer and irrigation standards regulations in there so homeowners can see them and understand them, because most regular folks don't read chapter 77 of the code very often, so it'll be very clear for them. And we also are going to include those dark sky standards for lighting in the HOA documents, and that, that would be a first. That would be for individual lot owners to know there are standards they've got to follow. They can't just have unlimited lighting and floodlights. You know, they have to have timers and the downward-facing lights, and we, dark sky has done a nice job of giving some sample covenants and restrictions, so we're looking at those. So, we'll have those back at final. These are just some of the very stringent stormwater requirements that we discussed before as well, both in county code, also FDEP and Water Management District, very high level of phosphorus and nitrogen reductions. So, the engineering plan will, will demonstrate all of those. I know that was a concern of the neighbors as well, protecting the lake and the water quality. So, those are the standards that your county staff will be looking at amongst others. Don't need to read all these, but these are just, I put this in the zoning discussion, so the county was reminded of their own pretty stringent requirements for limited irrigation and fertilizer. So, this will all be embedded in the HOA documents. So, the preliminary development plan does implement the land use and zoning map designations. It's consistent with your, the applicable sections of your code and comp plan. Your staff is recommending approval. I did also just want to put on the record that we are going to follow through with our responses that we provided to the neighbors and went over with you all last time. Some of them are sort of a moot point at this, at this point, that there's no commercial zoning, of course, in the number of units, but also, we're going to incorporate those dark sky standards in the HOA documents, as I mentioned, and that the stormwater standards have to meet those higher, higher standards that are, that I've referred to in this presentation. Utilization of Florida-friendly landscape materials. I think we're going to be probably all native plants as well, but I want to at least have that baseline, because there could be one example of an exception here or there that we'd like to ask for. Minimal lighting of entry signage, we did commit, and I, I provided this document before, so it's, it's out there on the record. So, we'll, and then the limitation of the recreational activities in the CMA area. We'd like to just keep it really just a natural area with minimal entry and exit and the management of exotics and invasives, and just have it be a natural, like, addition to the larger area that's to the east of the property. So, with that, I'll conclude, and if you have any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Pritzke and then Commissioner Alfred.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you to you and to the developer for their work to honor the commitments that you made. I mean, I know they're, they're codified and they're in the comprehensive plan, but, you know, oftentimes, the steps go, oh, we tried and we couldn't, and I see a lot of effort made here to protect the trees and to even take a step further in terms of design to protect those extra wetlands and things like that, so just really appreciate all the hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you to our client to be willing to do the things that I'm offering.
Commissioner Alfred, then Commissioner Wheeler.
Yeah, I, in 2008, I became what's called a lead accredited professional, and so many of the things that we're talking about here were talking points. They weren't even action items yet in the whole U.S. Green Building Council thing, including dark skies. And so, to me, it is a huge milestone to have an entire neighborhood embrace all of these standards. It is, it's a real accomplishment, and I think this is a, this is really a flagship example for our county as to what development can be. So, thank you, all of you, for, for what you're doing here. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing. This is a model that perhaps you all could put to, in some kind of document even, you know, that could be shared with other developments as they come forward, not only to us, but throughout the state, because this is real exciting, and it just shows that you know this board well, and they chose well in, in picking you to be a part of their team, because you, you understand what it's, what we're asking. And I just really appreciate you following through to the point where we can just say congratulations, and this is easy. This is an easy ask. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
A lot of work on everybody's part.
Yeah, but I, I'm serious about writing it down somehow, you know, that you can share through your work, you know, as somehow, you know, touting the success of this program that you can use as, as a way to promote your own work.
I think a lot of the things that you're referring to will be in writing. They'll be in the final development plan. They'll be in the HOA documents, the things that we committed to do, and so they can be used as models where appropriate on other projects.
But you could do it in a little short thing, you know, to say, reference for that, you know, referring back to that work, but.
We'll sign up for that conference presentation.
Absolutely.
Glad to.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Clay, I just have really a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. Can you pull up the, the map again, the north-south map, and tell me where tree number 583 is and tree number 215?
Well, I can tell you, if it's a landmark live oak, it's one of the ones in the red, the red circles. I think if you give us a moment, your development review director is on the spot.
Oh, you got it.
583, here we go. I made a map myself. This is 583, this one right here.
That one, okay.
Yep.
And then where is 215?
Which one?
215.
215 is this one down here. I think that's the one that was near the existing house, which is probably the, is that the rated five one?
Yeah.
Could you pull those two up on the screen?
Um, yeah, we'll have to go back to my presentation real quickly.
Those are the pretty ones, aren't they?
I mean, they're all beautiful, but yeah.
It looks like a sculpture garden with those trees in it.
Here's 215, this one here by the house.
Look at that tree.
Should we all take a minute?
All right, show me 583.
583.
That's the big fancy one, that one, yeah.
There's 583.
Look at that tree.
Oh, party.
You could put a swing on that one.
Yeah, so, you know, Clay, and really everyone, I mean, when I'm looking at, everyone in this room has their fingerprints on this, from our EPD, the Growth Management, our Communications Group.
Neighbors.
To the neighbors, to the, you know, we had a lot of asks, and you guys delivered on the trees, on the dark sky, on the Florida-friendly, on the limitations of the CMA. And I, I mean, I agree with my colleagues, like this, if you're a developer and you are thinking about Alachua County, please take time, watch the meeting we had before this, watch this meeting, because from my perspective, guys, this is like how it's supposed to work. This is the standard. The community is going to, I think, just love not only this development, but it's the first one, just, this shouldn't be, this is the first development east of Main Street, I think in, I don't know how many decades, four decades, five decades? And, and first, Christine's, it's first one, and, and they're coming out of the gates setting a new standard for Alachua County. And so, I just want to acknowledge that. I want to thank the developer and Clay, you and Sergio and your team and our staff. It's really, really amazing. And with that, my comments are complete, and I will look for a motion.
Is there staff recommendation?
Second.
They've got a motion, a second, to approve the preliminary development plan for the Eastwood Preserve. Is there any discussion from this board, any public discussion to the motion? Why don't you come up and talk to us for just a second? Yeah, yeah.
Be a public.
Take a bow.
Yes, sir.
I just want, any comments?
No, we're just looking forward to the opportunity, bringing up project to the east side, and working with you guys has been, we were warned, but it's actually turned out to be a really, quite a good process. So, yeah, it's been, it's been, the dialogue has been good, and Clay has been great, his team. We normally don't have this much back and forth, but yeah, it has ended up with a really, really great project. I think it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful community.
Very exciting. That needs to be in the case study, too.
All right, thank you.
It's not so bad. It's just not so bad.
All right, bring it back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll pose, show that motion as passing unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Clay. Thank you, guys. Great, great work. All right, so it is right at 5:30 with that public comment, you, that public comment, you got me to 5:30, so thank you. So, this is now the second opportunity for the public to address this board on anything not on the agenda. Bracken, I see you out there. This will be the time. Come forward. Welcome back.
Thank you. So, yeah, I spoke earlier in regards to more of environmental issues of the dump, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of Southeast Gainesville. My name is Bracken Camp, for the record. And I just really, you know, it's the end of the year, and we've kind of had a tradition of coming at the last meeting, and I just called and I was like, oh, it's the last meeting of the year? I'm going to go. And, and just make sure that we're, you know, that the board is still, you know, actively thinking about the closure of the dump, and, and just want to know where we're at with that, because there's a lot of different information out there. I don't know if anybody looked at the, the alligator article a few weekend, weeks ago. So, the University of Florida, we have a group there called PISCIA that's been really involved. They're a public interest group, and they found out about what's going on in Southeast Gainesville, and they got involved, and they're, like I said, a student group. And so, they've been putting information out, learning different things, but there's so much different information that not everybody always gets the information correct. So, they put an article out that went out on the radio and on, you know, around town in their newspaper that said the dump was closing in nine months. So, I was like, is that true? You know, like, that's not what I understand. So, I'm here as, you know, someone who's, doesn't understand all the little details of what's going on behind the scenes and just really want to know where we're at with the process, because gratefully, everyone that's sitting right where y'all are are opposed to the dump at this point, and I'm really so grateful for that, and we've made a lot of progress. But I know that the state now, it's in the state's hands on a lot of levels. And then the article, they did a, you know, a repair work around it and said that, no, now it's 2027 when it's closing. Where are we at? And that was what Ken, you know, asked if I'd come back, and I just want this to be on the record for anyone that's out there, where we're at with the county's particular part. And if you know anything about the state's, you know, where they're at with the special use permit, I think is what it's called, SUP. And, you know, for people who don't know, Florence is the owner of the dump, and it was, you know, the, the Board of County Commissions had said, no, that we, they weren't going to renew the permit, but he went around that to the state through a special unit or a special use permit that had to do with hurricanes, which I, we did have hurricanes that year. We didn't get them as bad right here, you know, so it was a little bit of a, a little, you know, sneaky move, if you may say. So, yeah, so that's where I'm at. I just am here to ask the question of, of what is the closure date, and, done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishes to address this board, and then we're going to go ahead and ask the attorney or missy to give us an update on that. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and so I will turn to our staff, and maybe you could give us a summary. We've got some correspondence that went out from Growth Management, but maybe you guys could give us your thoughts.
We're going to rock, paper, scissors over here. So, a, a couple of things have happened. Back in October, at the end of October, Growth Management sent a letter to Mr. Florence stating that we have calculated his SUP expiration date at August 11th, 2027. We have not heard anything back, as far as I know. That went out of, under Mr. Hayes's name, but that is the date that we are expecting the SUP to expire based on the extensions that they've claimed throughout the years. They've claimed a number of extensions, that they will have to close on that date if they don't get an extension from you. That's when they have to have gotten an extension from you. Beyond that, the state's permit was set to expire on February 9th, 2026. They, to be timely and sufficient, they needed on February 9th, 2026. They...to be timely and sufficient, they needed to have submitted application renewal by tomorrow. That's February 10th, 2025. I'm sorry, December 10th, 2025, but they submitted it this morning, early this morning. So, that one has been submitted. If they...if the state is reviewing the application beyond the February 9th date, they'll be able to continue to operate because they submitted in a timely and sufficient manner.
And they only submitted for five years instead of ten?
That's right. They could get up to 10 years. They submitted for five, which would take them through 2030.
For this...
The state permit to operate a construction demolition landfill.
But that is predicated on the fact that they have a special use permit that's renewed from us.
So, we're not allowed to stack our requirements on top of their requirements, and they're not allowed to deny their permit based on not having our permit. That said, they need both to operate.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I...so, do you guys conclude? Because I'm going to say back to you what I think I heard you say.
Okay.
Okay. So, what I think I heard you say is, "We believe that the special use permit will expire on August 11th, 2027."
Correct.
In order for that, them to continue past February 9th of 2026, they will need the state to renew the state permit, because they have to have our permit and their permit. So, if the state does not renew their permit, then they would need to close prior to 2027.
Right. So, if their application to the state is timely and sufficient, which it is, then come February 9th, if the state hasn't acted on its permit yet, then they can continue to operate.
Continue to operate. Now, if the state could, though, deny their extension. And so, right now, it's in the state's hands until the state decides one way or another. The state could either accept it, and then it keeps going for a minimum, at least until ours, but not more than five years from that date.
For that extension.
For that extension.
There's nothing that says they can't ask for another extension.
So, presuming that the state approves it, then we're looking at the next possible closure date as, from our perspective, August 11th of 2027. However, we have not heard back from them with regards to whether or not they agree on that date.
I would say at this point that we are not in agreement. We've gotten many different dates from them, but certainly nothing as soon as August 11th.
Our date is August 11th, 2027. I think we wait to get past the state, see what happens with the state, at which point, in the spring of next year, we may need to give some direction to clarify if those dates, if our date is correct.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, our intent is to ask you to allow us to ask the court to clear that up in plenty of time that come the August 11th date. If we're correct, that they would have to either have an extension from us or close.
Okay. So, does everybody understand the dates? All right. Mary, Alfred, your request.
So, would there be any suggestion that the public contact DEP or WHO at the state if they wanted to advocate for the state to deny the application?
So, certainly, the agencies can hear from the public. Generally, they are making their decisions based on the standards and the regulations, and presumably, you know, if the public had something to say about how they've met their standards or not met the standards in the regulations, that would be one thing. It's not really a political thing at that point.
No, but I think there's an interpretation of the standards that has changed over time, like when the landfill opened versus now and the, you know, the use of property then versus now. And I think that...I think the public could have very compelling arguments for the state to deny, but I don't know that they will.
I will tell you that I spoke to Tom, our lobbyist. He is aware of this issue. He is in touch with DEP. DEP has a copy of the alligator article. They have read it, and so, we'll see what happens.
Well, it's good that Tom's on it.
Tom's on it.
I'm just wanted to say that for the benefit of the public, so they could think of something, if there was something they wanted to do, that is something they could do.
Well, I think it's a good question for this board. Is there anything this board can do with DEP to help educate them based on the additional environmental standards that we are now monitoring, the additional things, the additional money we're spending? We saw, again today, $30,000 to monitor. Is there anything that are...any direction you all need from this board to help inform DEP as to the status of our permit and their request for an extension?
So, I have in my file somewhere the last board action. I think there was a number of points. I think that staff is authorized to comment on permits without coming to you first on that. I don't know what those comments would be at this point. That would be something that Environmental Protection would have to speak to. They would be speaking to the standards and the regulations and whether Florence meets those. I know that the state knows that we're collecting data and is prepared to review the data that we're collecting, the air quality data that we're collecting. I don't...I can't...I'm not qualified, nor do I have the most updated information about what that air quality data is showing at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Pritzke?
So, do we need a motion to have Environmental Protection? I guess I'll make a motion to have Environmental Protection reach out to DEP with regards to the permit and share any relevant information with regards to the monitoring that we've been doing and how it might impact...
I know that they received the application this morning, that our Department of Environmental Protection received the application this morning. I think that they are empowered, but if you want to make a motion, that's fine, to empower them to comment on it if they have comments.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
So, I have a motion, a second, to have our environmental staff kind of lean in and understand the permit and communicate directly with DEP. Any discussion to the motion?
I have a quick question. One of the...what she's talking about in terms of moving around the state, are we still getting executive orders related to that hurricane? Because that's one of the things that...
Right. The letter went from Mr. Hayes and Growth Management. They did all the math on the extensions based on those hurricanes, and that was the latest date based on the tolling period, based on our dates, when I read the letter.
Right. So, it's going to depend which hurricanes they claim. We believe they claimed a couple hurricanes already. Those hurricanes have expired, and we can calculate dates for that, and that's why we gave you a date. If they claimed other hurricanes, there are some that are still in the tolling period that, you know, I get extensions every week.
Gotcha. That's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah.
We're seeing that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public discussion? The motion? Yeah, you can come back. Sure. You're here. You're the reason we're to make motions on the last day of our meeting.
My question is around the what's being found with the monitoring, because y'all were so gracious in that huge amount of money that has been put towards that, and how do we have access to knowing that? You know, what's coming back from that? Because, you know, that could be something that could be influential in this decision. And then, the second question was that what I heard right now was about the hurricanes, and I remember one of them was Nicole, and there was another hurricane. Maybe it was a tropical storm, but regardless, I mean, can they just keep...my understanding was they couldn't keep adding more and more hurricanes on top, because we live in Florida. Let's get real. There's always going to be a tropical storm. There's always going to be a hurricane. So, and this year, we were spared, thankfully, you know, but those other years, we had a lot of them. And I don't even think that Helene and all those other really big ones were even put on that, from what I remember. So, I might...there's two questions about the monitoring, and then the second would be that date of August 2027. Is that what was calculated? And is there any way for that date to be before then? Does it...
Yeah, okay. So, I'll attempt to answer, and then I'll ask the attorney to correct everything I say that's not correct.
And then, one other question was, usually, he does five-year reviews, right? And so, the last time, I believe it had come up, and it was denied by the county commission, or maybe we didn't even get there because of the state issue. So, when would that date be, you know, like, so...
Yeah, so, I'll attempt to answer your question, Bracken. So, as I understand it, statute allows for up to two hurricanes for the calculation of the tolling. Our Growth Management, based on information we've received from the Florence attorney, has calculated that date, and so, we have determined what a date is. We have not received any word from them that they agree with that date, and so, that was what we talked about with regards to if we have a disagreement, we may have the courts...we may have to give direction, ask the courts to clarify that. With regards to the monitoring, I know our EPD is doing that, and I believe they're putting it, that information into a portal, and so, it would be available to the public with a public records request, but we'll ask staff to kind of get back to us on how they're gathering that information, and I think they're doing it every couple of weeks, but I'm not sure on that. And then, your last question regarding...what was your last question?
I believe the question was, "When will the SUP come back?"
Oh, the SUP, the special use permit?
Right.
Yeah, for the county, and that is...
Right. So, the SUP could come back out for an extension when it's going to expire, and that would be the August 11th, 2027 date. They would need to come in before then if they want an extension.
All right. So, thank you for that. We got any further discussion from this board on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Ken, I would just like to let her know that I think you need to reach out to our local delegation and ask the senators and the representatives to write a letter to DEP to...and bring them up to speed about the Florence landfill. I think that that's going to be important, but by having that letter from the local delegation or our representatives, state representatives or senators, will give some clout to Department of Environmental Protection that we're serious, and that...so, that will help. I think it will help.
Coming from the citizens and local delegation.
Right, right.
West from the citizens to local...
To the allegation to do that, right. You have? Okay.
Mr. Chair, water quality monitoring reports and air quality monitoring reports related to Florence landfill are on the EPD website.
On the local EPD website?
Our local website, that's right. When you go under our website, there's something that says "in the spotlight" as one of the options, and there's "climate action planning", and then, there's Florence landfill with those reports.
It's on our website, Bracken. Okay. Open to anyone, yep. Okay, so, that concludes. Mary, did you figure out the thing that you had forgotten?
No.
Okay, was there any...
I must have said it. It's a real email.
Okay, any further things?
Somebody else got something.
Just very quickly, I thought Mayor Randall might come today, but we had gotten a commitment for Dr. Brody to put the satellite in Hawthorne.
Say that again? Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We've gotten the commitment from Dr. Brody to put the Santa Fe satellite out at Hawthorne. I went with the mayor, and we met with Wirehouser, who's going to give them the land, and we met with Dr. Brody's team, and they are going to work collaboratively with the city manager to build a design for the community center that they're building out there. Wirehouser's giving them the land to do it, to build a community center, and they're going to then add classrooms to that design so that Santa Fe can...
Is this in the...
It's an inning.
And where?
It's going to...the property that we've looked at there, that Wirehouser that we approved, they're going to...
In that industrial...
Yes, right on the road, yes.
That's great.
Yes, so, it's very exciting. It's very exciting, and they're excited, too, because one of the features that we have over on that side of the county, that they don't have any place else in the county, is the water, and they're getting ready to put in an aquacultural program.
That's great.
Yeah, so, we're getting a gig.
So, is that an old light or a new light? Okay, great.
Old light.
Commissioners, anything else? You know, happy holidays. This is our last regular meeting. We got our meeting with the city tomorrow at 1:00 and Grace Night, and you should have the backup in your boxes. We've got the cultural arts in our discussion, the food assistance update, and food system initiatives. Yeah, our staff will be presenting that to the city. No specific ask, but good information. Okay, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.